It's seven o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. I want to rise to send the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the board.
Mr. Hupkey, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March, Mr. Hand.
Yeah.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the May 8th, 2017 regular village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, a motion to accept is written.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Hand.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Present.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 5/6/17, in the amount of $46,172.93. Accounts payable, general fund, $49,116. Motor fuel tax fund, $68,500. Water and sewer fund, $9,735.86. Giving a total for all funds of $127,347.02. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Not a motion to pay the bills and the payroll?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hack, second by trustee Bowden.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Public comment or questions on any non-agenda item? Move on to reports of committees. Well, police chiefs report tonight, engineers report.
The final lift of anything was put on Hubbard Lane. So that's complete.
Very good.
That's all I had concerning questions.
Any updates on the stoplight and the land acquisition?
The land, I believe that agreements were made. Now it's just paperwork and getting it tied up. But we were past the June deadline already.
Of course.
So now that the agreements are made and we're moving forward to get approval, it should be August letting.
Okay. So building this year or are we already in the next spring?
I think it's a question mark if they would want to start something this year or if they want to hold off till next year. It might be on the contractor.
Okay.
But how long does it take to do that project from the time they break around till the time it's functional?
And the contract, if I'm remembering what it was, I believe it was a 90 working day contract, which means, you know, if it rains, it doesn't count. So that could go four or five months depending on how many actual working days are.
Okay. Police procluses?
Yes.
Yay.
Public Works Committee.
We have the meeting, May 18th. Those are the attendants for myself, Dr. March, Bob Hinke, and Greg Spathus. One of the main topics was parkway tree planting. Bob gave us a list of trees that were available from the Kankakee Nursery, which was a little bit slim pickings this time of the year. But we're going to go ahead with them. And we're going to check with a couple other nurseries for the fall. It was agreed that we would purchase and plant 30 to 35 trees at a cost between $4,500 and $5,000. And the trees will be planted on both sides of Corning from Route 50 to West Street. We wanted to concentrate the planting so it would have some impact of what we're doing as opposed to spreading it all over town. And it'll be easier for Bob to maintain in one area. And maintenance will be easier. Bob's going to purchase the trees and we hope to get them planted within the next two weeks. And we're also going to try to get gator bags for watering, either at low cost or for free. Bob gave us a list of the trees that were removed in the village from 2012 to 2016. Most of them from the ashed water damage. 415 trees have been taken out over the five-year period. And that doesn't include trees that were on personal property that owners took out. So it's had a huge impact on our tree population. And only 17 trees have been planted in the village during this period. So this kind of emphasizes the need. We want to get back on track and get some trees put in. And if residents call and express a desire to get a parkway tree planted, we're going to put them on a list. And we plan on doing another 30 to 35 more trees this fall. Sidewalk replacement program. Bob reported that he had marked the sidewalks that we replaced for this year's program. He said the engineer would have a list ready for tonight's board meeting, he thought.
I heard next board meeting.
Oh, next.
We do have the locations though. We did just get those.
So what happened by the next meeting? And we also talked about doing a larger program in the future with debt certificates to get all of our sidewalks in shape quicker. But that's just discussion. Talked about the street patch program. Bob presented the list of streets we patched. And we have that here in front of us tonight. We're going to purchase a new truck. Bob presented three bids on a new Ford F-550 with a V-shaped plow and fold-down box. It'll be presented and voted on in an upcoming board meeting.
It's tonight.
Tonight? Yes. Okay. And Conrad Street, Talbert, got a price of $7,200. And it was in this year's budget. And we'll proceed with the replacement. And general discussion we had, I commented on over by Ashburn Estates that the grass is getting extremely high. The developer, O'Donnell, knows it. He's been contacted multiple times and he's dragging his feet on mowing it.
They came in and mowed part of it. And then they were coming back. I don't know if they came back or not.
They were coming back today.
With a larger tractor because the one part was too long to mow with the piece of equipment they'd brought in. So I didn't go buy it today.
I did have a conversation with him and he understands where we need to be on that.
Because one of the comments I had was it either looks like a mowed hayfield or it looks like an unkept pasture. Cutting it once every, I don't know, month or whatever isn't enough. I mean, it used to look really great, but...
Because we mowed it.
But we mowed it.
Right.
And I think it should be kept that way. I mean, it's just, I don't think we should give him the option to dictate how it's going to look.
Unfortunately, I think by ordinance, it can get to a certain length before he has to cut it. And I mean, that's the only thing that we have to use as leverage.
What is that length, do we know?
Eight inches.
Eight inches. It was all of that. Let's see. We talked about code enforcement, possibly moving it into public works, a little more accountability and a little more aggressive approach on some of the items other than just grass. That's up for discussion later. And we're going to hire a landscaper to finish the landscaping around the welcome to Piattone signs, dirt and hostas. And we discussed lack of sidewalks around the schools. And we wondered if the school had any access to grants or whatever to pay for it. And Greg said there wasn't much money available for them. It'd be difficult. And he suggested that when we move into a TIF, some funds be returned to the school to accomplish that. And the meeting was adjourned to 3:45. The next meeting is at June 1st.
Any questions in the public works?
Has the, I don't know if this is the committee, but anyway, the sidewalk grinding, we bought the grinder and we were going to hire kids to do that. Has that started yet? Anybody know?
I talked to Bob briefly this week and he said yes. They've been out. I don't know what material they're in, but both of those summer helps are here and they've been out.
Cool.
Grinding.
Making noise, making it safer.
Noise and dust.
Yes. Anything else? All right. Item B, report of May 17th, 2017, interlational meeting regarding Aqua. Basically, we had our meeting last Wednesday night, public meeting. We had 49 people present for the meeting. We had, I mean, I think we had good discussion. There were some questions. I think a lot of questions hopefully got answered. Obviously, there's still some people that were there that weren't entirely satisfied with the answers. But I think Mr. Hartman did a good job of moderating the meeting and presenting a lot of good information. The report, that report is available on the village website. And there are hard copies here available for anybody that wants to pick them up at the Village Hall. And the board will continue to have discussions. We will be going into a closed session tonight to discuss that topic. Anything else from anybody on that? I think the minutes from that meeting we have here, but we'll have to put that on the agenda for the next meeting to approve those. Okay, so take a look at those and we'll bring that back for approval at the next meeting. Anything else from anybody on that? Old Business, item A, oath of office, myself and trustee Bowden. We were both unable to be here at last meeting. So we have to take our turn of getting this one in for the next meeting.
You want to do it individually or together?
Let's do it together.
If you raise your right hand for me, I state your name.
I, Stephen J. Cross.
Having been elected to the office of?
Village President.
Village trustee.
For the village of Piattone, county of Will, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the Illinois compiled statutes and the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of?
Village President.
Village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
I do.
You do. If you could sign these for me, those are for you.
Right here?
Here and down here.
You write to me.
All right. Thank you.
Item B, under Old Business appointments of committees, commissioners, and treasurer. All committees and protons and the one commission, the Christmas in the village commission, will all remain the same. There's no change there. Do I need to do these separately?
No.
Michael, can I do them all?
Okay.
I've got an appointment of Mr. David Rock to the Piattone or to the village of Piattone Police Pension Fund. His term expired on May the 1st. So we would reappoint him until May of 2019. Also, the same dates from, until May of 2019, for Adam Jones on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then also Marcy Hammond as village treasurer. That's for a year. So a motion to approve those appointments.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Hack.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
New Business, item A, special events, Piattone Car Club, 30th Annual Car Show, July 29th, 2017, in the downtown area with street closures of Main to First and Second Street from Main to Crawford and North Street from First Street to Railroad Street. The rest, the request also includes an amplifier permit and permission for open alcohol on the street. And those times are from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., correct?
Correct.
Todd, if you'd like to step up.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank the board and the past boards, past police chiefs and the present police chief to make it to 30 years because we can't do it without you guys. I mean, that's about why. We're just looking to do our normal thing. We're actually going to shut our registration down at 3:00 instead of 4:00 as we have in the past to try to get things wrapped up a little faster. I had a local band approach me, or one of the members is local. They won the Kankakee Battle of the Bands down in, I think maybe the Bourbon A-Fest. I'm not for sure. They, I don't remember that band, a band named Speedway Jeff. They're going to play after the show is done. And hopefully we get them wrapped up about 9:00 or 9:30 so we can kind of get everything wrapped up a little bit earlier. That's the reason why we're trying to start an hour earlier. So it's not such a late night since we're all getting old.
30 years old.
Yeah, 30 years. Well, I was 21 when we started this, so 52 now, so. But other than that, just we're looking for the normal, normal thing we do every year.
And I just want to say I appreciate you guys. You know, I know that there was some talk this year about maybe not coming back and getting to 30. But I'm very glad, and I know the board is glad that you're doing so because, you know, this is a great event for the community.
Quite a milestone. I never thought I'd see 30, to be honest with you.
But no.
And it's nice because like, the other day when I talked to you, you said, you know, you've had people tell you, "I went to that with my dad and now I'm taking my kids." And that's, that's me. You know, I went with my dad and I'm taking my kids. So I'm, I'm super excited that you guys are doing it. We get a lot of outreach. When people start here, we might not be doing it. But I mean, trust me, my ears were getting buzzed everywhere I went. But we're good at our best. Hopefully it don't rain.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood.
Any questions for Todd?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hack to approve the special event permit application with street closures, amplifier permit, and open alcohol for, as per usual for those streets. And are you doing the cups this year? Did you do the cups this year?
No, that was tractors for...
That was tractors, okay.
I got enough going on with doing what I do.
But under the same parameters as always, no glass?
Yeah, no glass, you know.
Plastic and?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. And a motion by trustee Hack?
Second.
Second by trustee Jones.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Trouble is, we're all getting older. We can't get enough of young guys like this. Start recruiting.
We've been trying.
Item two, St. Paul the Apostle Catholic Church, eighth annual Eucharistic procession, June 18th, 2017, with street closure of Conrad Street between the St. Paul parking lot to Crawford Street and Crawford Street from Conrad to West. Another annual event. This is Sunday, June 18th, approximately from 11:20 a.m. till 12:30 p.m. And I know that Paula from the church was unable to be here tonight. So anybody have any questions or comments on this? Not a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Hand.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Item B, ordinances, number one, an ordinance requesting the transfer of property from Piattone School District 207U. Request for the Board of Education to convey a permanent easement to the village of Piattone. Troy, do you want to speak on that?
Sure. This is for the future Rath G. Road reconstruction project, which should be constructed next summer, 2018. This easement is for, there'll be large culverts being constructed under Rath G. Road. So the easement is for the end sections of the culverts and to allow the sidewalk. And then it's also a flood plain. So the flood plain needs to be filled for the project slightly. So a lot of that easement, it's called a compensatory storage area, which is like, pretty much like a dry bottom detention pond, which it's just going to look like grass unless there's really big rain events. So that's what the majority of the easement is.
And we ended up at the school several months ago in regards to this. And they were able to, without charge, you know, give us this easement.
Yep. Great.
These are those two parcels north of the creek that butt up to Oak.
Oak Street.
Yep.
And then what about the west side of Rath G. Road easement?
We will talk about that later.
So that's all?
All right. Any questions?
So once this is done and it's a dry bottom, we're maintaining it?
We'll be maintaining it, correct. All right. So this is ordinance number 17-06, an ordinance requesting the transfer of property from Piattone CUSD 207U. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by trustee Hand, second by trustee Hack.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Item two, appropriation ordinance for the village of Piattone, ville county Illinois, April 1st, 2017 to March 31st, 2018. We held a public hearing this evening at 6:30. There was no public comment in the public hearing. This would be ordinance number 17-07. Any discussion? Questions? Motion to adopt the appropriation ordinance, ordinance number 17-07.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Item C, approval to go out to bid for the 2017 street patching project.
I passed a lot of location maps to the board. These are the locations that Public Works recommended. We put them on the map, the majority of the patching, a lot of it's on North Mill Street, Conrad Street, there's some on Corning and Garfield, and then a couple in the downtown, you know, western downtown. These will be four-inch patches. It's pretty much the majority of the project. Maybe a little bit of curb might be missed, or I don't think so. So this is to get these locations approved and then we could just finalize or, you know, get our specs together and go out to bid within the next couple of weeks.
Troy, where have the prices been coming in at? Are they close to last year?
Yeah, so far.
It's worked out.
I've seen it a little bit lower even for asphalt. But when I put together an estimate with this budget, I, you know, tried to, you know, be a little conservative. So normally we put a little bit of extra patching in that we think will be a little bit over and then we cut if we need to. So it's good to have it in there.
Does this map include both Bob and Jones' patching? One being water and the other one being Public Works?
From like, main breaks?
Yeah.
That's usually separate.
Okay, okay. The circles don't indicate any of those.
I don't think any of these are Jim's.
But when we bid it out, it's all been together, correct?
With Jim's patches? If that is the case, I'm not aware.
No, I don't think so because this is all out of, coming out of capital.
Right, but it'll all be done at the same time, wouldn't it?
I don't know who Jim's using. I'll have to ask him. It's usually not with this.
Because there's not that many of them, I don't believe.
No, but it's usually not with this.
Wouldn't it cost us less money if we could combine them and do that too as opposed to having a company come in and doing a couple little dabbles? Or what's your experience been?
Yeah, I mean, the bigger the project, you always get cost savings.
That's true.
So we could touch base with Jim?
But this portion of it will have to come out of the capital.
Capital, yeah. So I guess what we're looking for right now is approval to go out to bid for the 2017 street patching project with the as-noted locations.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hack, second by trustee Hand.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Item D, review three quotes and approval for purchase of 2017 F-550 dump truck. Governor?
Yeah, Bob went out to bid. He got three prices, that's what I'm looking for here. He got a price from Monroe Truck Equipment of $84,117. Kankakee Truck was $82,863. And Terry's Ford, their 2017 price was $88,315. And then they had a leftover 2016 for $85,990. Bob was hoping to go with the low bid of Kankakee Truck. They built the last truck, the big dump truck. So he, you know, he's happy with it. And then the truck from Kankakee also had, they threw in the fold-down sides on the bed, which the other two didn't have. And he, he liked that idea, so he was hoping to go with, stick with them. And that's the F-550 dump.
So that was the $82,863?
Yes.
What's budgeted? Is it within budget?
I believe it is.
I didn't think I would have left that.
I'm sure. I had that conversation with someone the other day. Can you see what we're budgeting?
He'll use this truck for plowing, I think.
Yes.
Little of everything because the sewer guy just wanted the pickup truck. So he said he'll use this for all the running around, everything.
Is Ford a preference or is there other main pick?
They make the F-550.
Yeah, they get the same.
Yeah, it was budgeted. Yeah, I think they did. I think it was split.
Okay.
Yes.
All three are parts. So covers the purchase price.
Motion to approve?
Motion by trustee Jones to approve the purchase of the F-550 truck from Kankakee Truck in the amount of $82,863. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Bowden.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Item E, approve and execute Kane McKenna and Associates Incorporated letter of agreement for a proposed downtown TIF district. Greg, do you want to speak?
Sure. Kane McKenna has done the majority of the TIFs in the Southland. And we contacted them for a price that would stay within the grant. If you recall, we got a grant for $16,500 to get this TIF going. And they're going to do their best to stay within that for both Phase 1 and Phase 2. They'll do all the qualifying, they'll have all the meetings, They'll do all the qualifying, they'll have all the meetings, they'll conduct, and then they'll write the redevelopment agreement at the end, which is very important. Of course, the board will be involved with that all the way down the line, and then we have some public hearings, and then we have Joint Review Board, which is all the taxing bodies have to meet and discuss this as well, so we've got a lot of work to do, but hopefully within the next 90 days we'll have this all wrapped up and we'll have a TIF going, so.
Can you explain just a little bit?
Sure. So, the TIF is for the downtown area, as you know, has been woefully, I don't want to say neglected, but just, it just needs help. And so what happens with a TIF is that the day you start the TIF, you establish EAV, the equalized assessed value, just for illustrative purposes, it's a million dollars. That's the EAV that day. That's how, they're taxing it now, that's how they come up with tax dollar numbers that these landlords and the owners pay. And then we, we apply the TIF to it and going from that day forward, that EAV for the taxing bodies that are, were getting money in the beginning, they still get that same amount of money. However, as we improve the district and do different things down there using the increment, so the increment is anything above that million, if it goes to $2 million, that million comes back into the TIF and that's spendable money for improvements and things within the TIF. There's a map, shows the boundaries of the TIF, so we can't, we can't boundary the TIF in the downtown and go out to the end of 50 to do something with the money. It's just not possible. It all has to stay within that taxing, taxing district, so. At the end of the day, at the end of 23 years, hopefully your project is done, hopefully it's doing everything you want. If there's a surplus, you turn it back to the taxing bodies. If there's no surplus, that's fine too, because you spent the money wisely and that'll help you reinvest in your downtown. So it's, it's money that is, is tax money. As they pay it, it comes in and that's the money you're allowed to use. There's a budget, we can't go over the budget, and that'll be established through meetings with the board and their desires. And of course, there's a redevelopment plan as to what you want to see down there, as we were talking a little bit earlier. If you want to see certain types of streetscapes and things like that, that's how you can pay for some of that and refurbish some of the buildings and get some things going down there with new owners and things like that, so. So that in a nutshell is what a tax increment financing district does. It is the only tool that Illinois will give us outside of a grant, which we'll never get because they don't have any money. It's the only tool that we can use for economic development in a small town like this because we have to generate our own income and that's generated through property tax, so. There's also, on top of that, we'll also put a business district overlay if that's desirable, and that adds 1% to the sales tax in that area only, which can also be used for marketing, redevelopment, reinvestment in the same area, so. So it's pretty, it can, it can be very lucrative and it can be a bust. I mean, it depends on what happens, but once we get going, the clock starts ticking and we got to get things going. Now, part of that is the school districts and the taxing bodies all have an opinion on that, and that's why we have a Joint Review Board. We sit with them, we listen to their opinions, and then at the end of the day, when we draw up the TIF program, usually we kind of, as I worked with Kane McKenna, we gerrymandered in the schools so we can help with, we can give money to the schools out of a TIF, but they can only use it for infrastructure and, and capital improvement. They can't use it for education purposes, paying teachers, paying principals, but they can use it to fix their buildings, fix the heater, put sidewalks in, things like that, so. So there's, there's a lot of benefits that TIF, a lot of people call that corporate welfare. Kind of in a way it is, depending upon how much you give away, but, you know, again, we don't have the resources to write checks without it, and, and checks are what we're going to have to write to make that downtown come back. So this is one of two that we're going to look at. We're going to look at another one west on the interstate, at the, at the interchange there, but this is, this will be the first one out of the gate and I think probably one of the more important ones. So, because we've got to get something going downtown, so. Any questions?
So not really people think these harm the schools, but this one, the way your district did, will actually help the schools?
It'll help the school.
Help the schools.
It, it, it doesn't, they don't keep gaining the additional property tax until the TIF is over, but as we put things in there and we, and what we put in there really is our best efforts because we don't know what's going to develop and how much it's going to bring in, but if we have some surplus every year, we can do it every year, we can do it five years, whatever we want to do, we can give some money back to the schools to help them get some things done. Doesn't affect their, their rate from the state or anything like that. At the end of the day, if we're very successful, at the end of the 23 years, 23 years, it all goes back to the taxing bodies as far as going forward. They get all that new, that new taxing money, and then that will affect some of their state aid at that point, but until then, anything we give them is a bonus to them, so.
Do we have any control of what they spend the money on?
Nope.
Like, we're talking about needing sidewalks.
State does.
They say, hey, we want to put a boiler in.
No, it's, no, I mean, we could recommend. The state does. Although it's in a TIF district, so we could put the sidewalk in because it's right next to the public street, so, you know. But typically you want to work with the school and say, here, you're going to get this, you know, we're declaring a surplus, you're going to get this amount of money this year, and they have to, they have to spend it according to state law on, on infrastructure and sidewalk would be infrastructure, so.
Have we had any discussions with the schools?
I've talked, the school district gets it, they understand it.
Okay.
And they're more than likely going to be for it, especially since we would be one of the very rare ones in the state that actually want to work with the school district because most of them don't. So, you know, it'll be, it's, it's a good partnership and the superintendent understands it. Some of the other taxing bodies may or may not, but...
School's the biggest one in the property taxes.
They're, they're the 800-pound gorilla, and then next you have, you know, you got Will County, then you got Fire, and then you got, you know, I'm down from there, so. But they'll all be in a room, they'll all have a chance to say something, so. And then Kane McKenna will run those meetings, so.
Any questions? Discussion? If not, a motion to approve and execute the letter of agreement for the proposed downtown TIF district with Kane McKenna and Associates.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Bowden.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
We are going to be going into a closed session on a couple of different topics. Wanted to announce next week there is no branch brush pickup because it's the fifth Monday of the month, so the following week we'll go back onto the regular schedule. Village Hall will be closed Memorial Day in celebration of Memorial Day also. Any other...
Closing at 3:00 on Friday.[1705.12]